All right, let's move on to announcements, please. First item is receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. And Jennifer, if you could turn that over to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're just gonna pull up the presentation quickly and it'll just take a second. Okay, the presentation is up, I hope you can see that. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Jennifer Dianos. I'm the Assistant to City Manager. And I'm here to represent our Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team and provide you an update on COVID-19 this evening. Tonight, I have a short presentation for you, but there are a few important topics to note. The agenda here on the screen shows the overall list of topics, including our county's current statistics, our status on the blueprint for a safer economy, the local COVID-19 testing, there have been recent changes to that, Play It Safe, which includes information about playgrounds at city parks and the county's Halloween guidance, small business support, and a fall community cleanup event that's offered through Recology. As of October 8th, just this past Friday, the County Health Department reports 476 positive COVID-19 cases in San Bernardino. Here you see San Mateo County's data dashboard, which includes a total of 10,601 positive COVID-19 cases in our county and a total of 155 deaths. The dashboard provides a snapshot of data related to cases in our county and is the information that the state uses to evaluate our containment of COVID-19 and what tier we are in for the blueprint for a safer economy. Our status remains in the substantial or the red category. The state recently added a new metric to evaluating data. As I previously reported, the blueprint for a safer economy relies on two measures. That's the adjusted case rate and overall test positivity. That's to determine when a county can move to a less restrictive tier that allows or restricts categories of businesses to operate with modifications. Most counties have significant differences in test positivity among more and less advantaged neighborhoods. And with that said, to advance to the next less restrictive tier, depending on its size, the county will need to meet a new equity metric and demonstrate targeted attention to eliminate disparities in levels of transmission. And for example, in our case, county's moving from red to enter into the orange tier, the lowest new metric, which you see here on the screen, must be within the 5% on the orange tier threshold, or 5.2%. As of today, you can see our numbers published by the state earlier this afternoon. San Mateo County meets two of the three criteria, with the positivity rate and the equity metric both being met within the moderate range. The new cases per day does not meet the criteria, which means we will remain in the substantial category as of now. And the criteria has to be met for two consecutive weeks, meaning that we'll remain in this category for another two weeks at minimum. As a reminder, businesses can go to the state's website at www.covid19.ca.gov and pull up information on what operations are allowed by the state with modifications. And again, this information is updated weekly. To meet the measures, members of the public are encouraged to get tested for COVID-19. Testing is available for everybody who lives or works in San Mateo County, even if one does not show signs or symptoms of COVID-19. San Mateo County has recently increased their testing capacity by almost 5,000 tests per week. New appointments and testing locations are available from our county partner, Project Baseline, also known as Verily. Testing is available at the San Mateo County Event Center, and that's available from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Tuesdays through Saturdays. There's also a mobile testing site, which is available. It brings testing to areas that may not previously have had testing sites. There's a schedule on the county's website indicating the city and date of the mobile unit. One has to register in order to receive the address, and currently there are dates listed through October 16th, so it looks like they're being published weekly. And the remaining sites are located in Daly City and East Palo Alto. Testing through the county is again available to those who live and work in San Mateo County and is available at no cost to anyone over 18. The county of San Mateo also recently introduced testing for communities at pop-up neighborhood testing sites in priority locations. These locations are identified by the Public Health Department, and the county is partnering with local agencies and other local partners to operate these pop-up sites. Our San Bruno Emergency Operations Center team is currently reviewing this option and is working to develop an action plan. This is all in an effort to continue to meet the county's new equity metric. I also have the two websites listed on the screen, and that's where you can register for testing. The fastest, most streamlined way is to go to projectbaseline.com/covid19. As a reminder, outbreaks of the flu and COVID-19 have the potential to drain or impact our health system and resources. Medical professionals recommend getting a flu shot each year. And on the screen, you can link to a vaccine finder resource, or you can link directly through the state's website, and that's where this is pulled from. Again, that's www.covid19.ca.gov. Your primary care physician will likely also have COVID-19 testing and flu shot information as another resource that's available to many. Next are a few items that many of our San Bernardino families have been really anxious to find out more about. As of this past Friday, October 9th, playgrounds at city parks reopened with modifications. The state issued a guidance prior to the 9th, which allowed for the reopening of the playground with certain signage and rules in place, which we have put forth. The picture on this slide is an example of the signage you'll see of each play structure, which includes the structure capacity and total playground capacity. The rules listed on this slide, I realize it's a bit wordy, but they're direct from the state, and bear with me as I go over them quickly. They're important to follow for our community's safety. So first and foremost, face masks over the mouth and nose are required for everyone two years of age or older with caregiver supervision at all times to ensure face mask use. Not to use the playground when different households are unable to maintain a physical distance of six feet or when the capacity limit has been reached. Caregivers must monitor to keep adults and children from different households that leave six feet apart, so we're really relying on those caregivers to keep a careful eye. Consider coming on different times or days to avoid wait times and potential crowded times. There's no eating or drinking allowed in the playground, and that's to ensure that face masks are worn at all times. Wash your hands, uh, wash or sanitize your hands before and after using the playground. Elderly and persons with underlying medical conditions should avoid the playground when others are present. And lastly, the visits are limited to 30 minutes per day when others are present to ensure that everyone has a fair chance to play. On the screen here, you see the Halloween guidance that was recently issued by the San Mateo County Health Officers. This was a guidance that outlines safer ways to celebrate Halloween and Dia de los Fuertos. There are three categories or bands that events and ideas have been provided. First, it starts with safer alternatives. And examples of a safe way to celebrate these holidays are to spend time with people from your same household, carve pumpkins, have a scary movie night at home, decorating at home, dressing up, online parties or contests, playing music at home. Some that are listed in the higher risk, strongly discouraged activities include door-to-door trick-or-treating and trunk-or-treating, which is when children go around to trunks to solicit candy. And then lastly, activities that are not permitted and are considered high-risk are gatherings, events, or parties with non-household members, carnivals, festivals, live entertainment, hayrides, large outdoor celebrations. All of this is extracted from the guidance that's provided through the county. And there's a source link at the bottom of this screen if you'd like to see the complete list and ideas to keep your family occupied and to celebrate the holiday. There are some virtual activities that the Recreation Division is offering through the city, and so I do encourage families that are interested in participating in something a little different to visit our recreation guide available on our city website to see what options there are. And that's at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. Since our ELC was activated, our PIO team has partnered with the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce and Bay Area Entrepreneur Center, also known as the BAEC, and that's to support small businesses. And the BAEC and other local partners have established several programs to support those small businesses. Recently, there was a focused outreach to engage businesses with a team walking the businesses, the business saturated areas, to survey the businesses and provide information on resources and advisors that are available in our community at no cost. That includes assistance on accounting, finance, marketing, legal, and business strategies. The team also put together a short PSA, which is linked on this slide. If you click on the photo that says Small Business Assistance and Recovery Program, you will be directed to a short PSA, which includes an introduction to the program. The presentation itself and this link that I'm referring to will all be available on our website. And also, not on the slide, but worth noting, there will be a San Bernardino Recovery and Assistance Program Virtual Symposium that's scheduled for October 31st, November 1st, and November 2nd. The symposium will be for any business owners to participate by facilitating the workshop, recording a tutorial video, and sharing other business tools in addition to networking opportunities. There will also be micro grants developed for small businesses as they adjust and recover and reopen. And information about both the symposium and mini-grants will follow. And so as soon as that's available, we'll be able to update that information on our website. And I just want to take a moment to recognize the team over at the BAEC for all of the hard work that they've done with getting out to all of those small businesses. There is a grant program for small residential rental property owners in San Mateo County, and those are impacted by COVID-19. This program is offered through the county, and the application period is scheduled to open soon. The county plans to open the program during the middle of the month, and so that's likely any day now, it's just not open as of today. The grant program is for owners that have lost rental income from April 1st to August 31st. There is criteria for eligibility. Information about this program is available on smcstrong.org. And the program will include the collection of all applications before dispersing grants, so it's important to get the applications submitted to be considered for funding. And I bring here a fall community cleanup event that is scheduled for this upcoming Saturday, and that's for all of those that got into all of their closets and extra space during the shelter in place, and they have accumulated some extra trash that needs to be dispersed or disposed of. And that event is a drive-through drop-off event. It is limited to three cubic yards per vehicle, and that's similar to what would be included in the bulky pickup. And items that can be dropped off are paint, bulky items, ski waste, appliances, bags of garbage. Dirt, rock, and concrete will not be accepted. This event is limited to San Bruno residents only. IDs will be needed to be shown. Masks are required, and this event is really sponsored by Recology and will be held in our City Hall parking lot this Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Any questions can be referred to Recology, and that's at 583-8536. And lastly, we have here the SMC Alert logo and QR code. SMC Alert is the emergency notification system that is used citywide and countywide for emergency notifications. You can sign up by linking on this page using the QR code, or you can go to our website, sanbruno.ca.gov. And my usual promotion of our city social media account, we continue to increase our use of our media accounts, and that's Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And just to send out messages for both COVID and non-COVID-related topics, I would be remiss to not mention the City Manager's e-newsletter. So if you're not already subscribed, you can link to the latest edition, and subscribe for that matter, at sanbruno.ca.gov/citymanagerene newsletter. And with that, that concludes my presentation this evening. I appreciate your time and am available for any questions.
Jennifer, thank you very much for the report and the update. We do appreciate it. And if there, I'm seeing no hands up, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our next item. And that is item B. This is going to be receive the annual report from the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee. And I believe we have the Chair that will be giving that presentation. And that will be Chair Durazo, good evening and welcome.
Hi, good evening, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. It is my pleasure as the Chair of the Traffic Safety Parking Committee to present the annual report to the City Council today. Can I get the next slide, please? So my name is Marco Durazo again, I am the Chair, and I wanted to just highlight members of the committee and members of the larger team. I am joined on the committee by John Lambros, who's our current Vice Chair, Scott Thomas, and Stephen Seymour. From the larger team and from staff support from the city, Awan Ritchie, who is a city engineer, our interim traffic engineer, Said Bakri, and the recently promoted, I think Lieutenant Jean Wong, are make-out the larger team. Next slide, please. Just to kind of give a scope of TSPC responsibilities, essentially, the Traffic Safety Parking Committee, we review and recommend actions to the City Council. And these are included, but not limited to traffic calming, parking, and local traffic issues. We also review policies and programs affecting traffic and parking for final City Council action. We always make clear that our committee is recommending action to the City Council, and the ultimate authority and vote does rest with the City Council. So we do our best to be transparent and explicit about that to the community while we're in deliberation. And some of those examples include parking restriction application, traffic calming toolkit, and crosswalk installation guidelines. Dialoging with the community and letting the committee know that we're available, that we're volunteers, and sharing information, and essentially being a conduit between the City Council, the city, and the community is something that's important and integral to the work that we're doing. In partnership with the city, we do this in a variety of ways. I know mailers are sent out to the community when there's issues that are gonna be discussed that are affecting them or are close to affecting them geographically. There's also information on the city website. Staff support contact is something that we've utilized recently, more frequently, more recently. I know that there's desire to have extended conversations and there's questions. And you know, we're clear to the community that we're volunteers and not necessarily always available, aside from when we publicly deliberate, but we remind the community that they're always welcome to follow up with the City Council and city staff, who are always prompt and pretty quick to get back to folks. And then these are all additional communication tools in addition to obviously our monthly public meetings. Just to highlight 2019 accomplishments, like a lot of folks in the city, COVID kind of took us offline for a few months, so this highlights just a few months of the work that the committee did. But nonetheless, they include, under the general umbrella term, parking restrictions. We recommended reducing red curb zone on Whitman Way between I-280 and Cortland Drive. We recommended the establishment of a red curb bus zone on Elm Avenue for U2 corporate shuttles. We also reviewed a proposal for a permit parking zone for employees of the Public Works Corporation Yard. And we recommended a passenger loading zone on San Mateo Avenue in front of La Petite Berlin Swim School. Continuation of some of the accomplishments from this past year. And under the umbrella of traffic safety evaluations, we recommended minor street stop controls at the intersection of Santa Lucia Avenue and Parkview Drive. We reviewed a proposal for minor street stop controls and warning signs at the intersection of Willow Way and Valleywood Drive. And we also recommended minor street stop controls and other safety improvements at the intersection of Amador Avenue and Del Norte Drive. Traffic safety evaluations continued. We also reviewed proposed striping modifications and parking restrictions at the intersection of Pine Avenue and Second, Pine Avenue and Fifth Avenue. I was actually recused from those conversations because those are close to home, but the committee did good work and was able to move forward on those. We also reviewed proposed traffic calming measures to be included in the Huntington Avenue and San Antonio Avenue Bicycle Corridor project. Reviews of policies and procedures. The committee spent a considerable amount of work and discussion and partnership with city staff on this particular accomplishment. We reviewed proposed residential parking program guidelines. We reviewed changes to the special parking restriction policy. And we also reviewed proposed residential block party policy. Some of the goals for 2020 is review, propose, update to traffic calming toolkit procedure, complete TSPC review of improvements recommended by the citywide intersection safety study, develop a process or tool for tracking items that have come before the committee, and lastly, but not least, develop a process for a more integrated approach to evaluating neighborhood concerns. And this is something that's pretty important to the committee. We try to end our meetings every time we assemble with this information at the end because the community wants to continue the conversation. And we're pretty clear about the guidelines of speaking with us off the record, so to speak. So we're always end our meetings with this information so they know exactly who to reach. They can do it by mail or hand-deliver any letters, they can email. And we always very clear about what the guidelines and the framing of what those requests should be so that they could be expedited and given to the correct city staff for action and follow-up. So it's the City Contacts Public Works Department. We share this information with the community. We reread it per annum, which I'm not gonna do here, but we make sure that folks know that they can talk to the police if there's any follow-up questions or any kind of context that they need. And we make sure that the informations and the emails are provided to them. So to report a traffic engineering issues, contact the Department of Public Works. In City Contacts, the Police Department, we make sure not to call 911 number, but call the non-emergency number. And it's also very helpful to have, it was very helpful to have Jean Wong there because we have police there so that we can refer any legal questions to our Police Department liaison. Was that the last one? Yeah. So that concludes my presentation for the annual report from the Traffic Safety Parking Committee. Happy to answer any questions from council at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do very much appreciate your time and the committee's effort, and thank you for being here this evening. And we do have Councilmember Mason.
Hi, thank you, thanks for serving. I just wanted to ask what, if you could, so like the top three most common issues that come to traffic and safety, what would you say they are?
Yeah, that's a great question. Put me on the spot a little bit, but I'm gonna do my best to answer. One of them, and it's one of our goals for 2020, is really getting better organized and really getting a better sense of timeline on the issues that are coming to the committee and really what follow-up is. I know folks that, you know, come to the committee and said, "I've brought this several times and nothing's been done about it." There is some truth to that, and there's also a process that we try to be transparent about with city staff and with the committee, trying to work together. We're all volunteers, so we're not in City Hall every day. We're just there for those monthly meetings. So I think getting a better sense of what the larger constellation of issues are and making sure that we're being organized so that there's actually a queue in those processes so folks aren't coming to the meeting with issues saying it wasn't addressed. So I think getting better organized and getting better in lockstep with city staff is a priority, it comes up, and it's one of the goals for 2020. I think secondly is just traffic calming issues and safety issues, and being clear that there's, the engineers have to do their work, and there's a study that needs to actually happen. So I know sometimes the community wants us to move really quick. And this is something I've learned in my time on the committee is that it might seem rational to put a stop sign in, and I think we need it, but the city has to have time to do the study, to do the justification, and to follow the law in order to put these apparatuses into the community. So that's a second, that's another one that we continue to kind of grapple with. And third, if, third, I think is really getting us to be more systematic in the work that we're doing. I know that just most recently, we had a request for a yield sign, and it made perfect sense, but the community was pretty clear that that might solve that issue, that safety issue at that particular intersection. But adjacent to that intersection, there's other issues that are just as serious. And how is it that we're addressing that issue, but we're not being systematic in our approach? So you know, what we dialogue with the community about is that, you know, that was our feedback to the city. We didn't take action on that issue, but we asked the city to go back and provide a larger systematic framework to that so that we can go ahead and address those safety issues altogether. So it's a variety of things, but I think the most urgent one is, you know, where's the follow-up, what's the timeline, and you know, why hasn't it been done? And sometimes it's a difficult question to answer, but the committee and the city have spent considerable amount of time talking about that issue. And I think 2020, the coming year, I should say 2021, because 2020 blew right by us, I think we do have a plan to get more organized and more on the same page about that. So I think the community will benefit greatly from that.
Thank you. And I would just say, I think as development comes, like, you know, the Amazon and the Southline project, your committee is gonna be very relevant in those discussions. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we're excited to get a new member, hopefully, tonight, because we've been down a player, and it'll be great to get a full committee there to do good work for the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
My question might be a staff comment or question, but you know, I think one of the complaints that a lot of residents have is, "I sent a letter, I sent an email, I sent an issue, and I just never know when it's gonna get addressed." So is there a way we can keep track of those things and maybe have it visible on the website? So it's like, oh, okay, I see that there's like these 10 other things that have to get addressed first, but my item is there? So as a, thank you. Is there a way we can give that visibility to the residents? And then the other piece is on your website is actually having, you know, maybe some links to really important information that we can't just make changes. I remember in my neighborhood, we wanted to put a stop sign because I dart out onto a street, and I feel like it's like, ready, set, go! And I dart across to not get hit because it's a really bad intersection. And you know, the studies come back, and there's a really good reason why we can't do that. And so there's a lot of things that I don't think about, and it made sense at the time. So how do we educate our residents at the same time?
Yep, you bring up an excellent point, and maybe I'll take the second one first. Is, you know, I think what commonly happens is, you know, someone will say, "I see speeding, can you put up a stop sign?" And you know, also myself not being a traffic engineer, I've also learned from the traffic engineers that, you know, stop signs are not solutions for speeding. We have recently, just this past meeting, provided some supplementing information to our traffic calming toolkit that we think will really help to engage the public, get the information out, help educate them on what traffic calming can do and the approaches. And so I think, you know, very good work was done by the TSPC members in developing and, you know, further expounding on it so that we have a really usable toolkit. And so we're excited to, you know, look at that. And you look at the concerns that have come in, and you know, I've directed our interim traffic engineer to look at the requests that have come in over time. And I think one of the first things will be to develop the outline for how to outreach to those particular members, and then develop a plan to step, with a step-by-step approach, you know, work through those concerns. And I think, you know, that does go to sort of your first question as to timeline and how, you know, and transparency. I think we may need to work with our city attorney and on what we do want to, because it also can pose, you know, a city liability. And so, you know, these are working documents that we are gathering. And, you know, we do hope that with the traffic calming toolkit that was just, you know, updated, that we can, you know, start going through those and hopefully alleviate some of the frustrations that people have been having because, you know, I think it has been a long time in coming as well. And so, you know, I'm eager to get that rolling. And, you know, sometimes I do have a similar impatience, but what I've recognized in dealing with now traffic engineers and through different agencies is they're often very thoughtful and methodical and really, really are concerned with safety and not making rash decisions that, you know, often it is a very step-by-step gradual approach. And, you know, that's something that I've come to appreciate and to almost expect because, you know, I share some of the similar sentiments, but I also have learned from them, you know, what conscientious progress. but I also have learned from them, you know, what conscientious progress looks like.
Well said. Thank you so much. I appreciate that information. And thank you. You had a great presentation too.
Yeah, Councilmember Davis, I just wanted to add if I could. You know, one of the things we do encourage to respond to this question is, I know it might be, it might not be the most exciting meeting in San Bruno, but we do encourage community to attend the meetings. One of the biggest lessons for me as a new community member was really the methodology of all the things that happen and the discussions, legal and otherwise, that have to happen before a traffic stop sign is even recommended to City Council. So it gives an opportunity for them to hear the report. Here's the opportunity for them to hear the city engineer and the staff. And I think they come away with an understanding of how these things work. And while the thought process might be, we need to do something about it. We need to give the city staff and the engineer time to develop a plan and make sure that everything is in place before that happens. So I think it's great for the community to come to those meetings. And a byproduct of that is that I often see as the Chair, you know, comments on Nextdoor and social media about concerns of different intersections and stop signs. You know, we really can't do anything if it's on Nextdoor, right? I encourage them, come to do public comment. You will be on the record and then city staff will have it in front of them for follow-up and to develop a plan. So it might not be the most exciting evening, but it does give a glimpse of the methodology and the work of the committee and the city together. And it was great to see you at our last meeting, by the way.
You're welcome. I was thankful for Mr. Mayor Medina for covering on another meeting that I had to say at a conflict every Wednesday night. So I appreciate that, Mayor Medina.
Okay, once again, Marco, thank you to you and the committee. Please pass on our thanks and appreciation. And thank you for tackling some difficult things. And though you said it may not be the most exciting, it's important to folks. And I know sometimes it takes a lot to explain and go through the process that it's just not a quick fix. But sometimes you have to look at the big picture. So thank you and we appreciate your time for being here this evening.
Do I just leave here and that's, is that how, is that how I leave this part of the meeting?
I don't want to say it like that. You're welcome to stay with us. Everybody's welcome.
I'll come right back so I can get out of this here. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Take care. All right, we're going to move on. We have two proclamations and then I also have one little announcement to add. So I'll go over these. Item C, Announce Proclamation Declaring October National Bullying Prevention Month in San Bruno. So I want to thank all the colleagues in the council who have signed this document. And I will read, there's probably about seven wherethes. Let me read some of that I think are important that the council has signed on. "We encourage others to pledge to contribute to a community without bullying through kindness, acceptance and inclusion." "And whereas, we support others who have been hurt or harmed. Treat others with kindness, be more accepting of others' differences and help to include those who are left out." "And whereas, we are committed to strengthening the cause, uniting those who want everyone to feel safe at school, in our community and while online, thereby raising awareness that bullying or negative behavior which infringes on the safety or welfare of students and those in our community will not be tolerated." "And now therefore, I Rico Umedina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim October as Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, as signed by every member of the San Bruno City Council." So I thank you team for coming by and getting that taken care of. We also have a second resolution, I'm sorry, proclamation this evening. And that is Item D, Announce Proclamation Celebrating Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st. This is customary and I'll read just the bottom portion of it. "Whereas Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd, 2020 through October 31st, 2020. And whereas, all those who reside, work and frequent the City of San Bruno are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red wristbands commemorating Red Ribbon Week. And whereas, the Red Ribbon community further commits to continuing to the success of Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of San Bruno hereby proclaims October 23rd, 2020 through October 31st, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week and encourages all to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that we all strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle." And obviously with COVID-19, things are a little different for that, but important to have that acknowledged as we do. The one thing I wanted to also add just in talking to P G N E this afternoon, because I know the red flag warning went out and it's reported about 1,500 plus individuals in the San Mateo County are potential to have that affect them. These are areas that are east of Half Moon Bay and the Hills, La Honda and Lamar. And so they're the areas that are not listed in San Bruno at this time, but it still is a reminder to all of us to be cautious and conscious of that.